Good evening. I hereby call the Palm Springs Regular City Council Meeting of April 9th, 2023 to or, I'm sorry, April 10th. I was gonna say this.
Yep.
Is April 10th. My script is wrong.
Yep.
Um, we are starting off with the Pledge of Allegiance, which is going to be led by Valentina Dolores. Valentina is in TK at Visita del Monte Elementary School. She is five years old, a social butterfly and the unofficial Palm Springs princess. She loves to golf, swim, cook, and dance. She loves her three dogs and loves spending time with her family, especially at Disneyland. Go ahead.
Stand up for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag and United States to America, to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Valentina. We appreciate it. And Valentina and her family are, uh, were District One residents and now they're District Two with the change of the lines. Thank you all so much. All right. City Clerk, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember DeHort.
Present.
Councilmember Hostage.
Here.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Mayor Protan Bernstein.
Here.
Mayor Garner.
Here.
Five members present.
Thank you so much. And we do have, um, a couple of presentations. If we can get the 85th anniversary up, thank you so much. So on Saturday, the city celebrated its 85th anniversary. It was an incredible day that began with a car parade, which you can see on the screen now, with cars from 1938 to 2023. We successfully had a car from each year and were poised to receive an official Guinness Book of World Records for that. Can you get the next slide? So thank you to Keith McCormick, who came up with the idea with Off Top Data and for executing this incredible event. Community members from all over the city rode in the parade, including former mayors and council members, um, and some of our, um, uh, folks who were being honored with keys. We can have the next slide. The opening ceremony honored our Grand Marshal Nancy Sinatra, Harold Matzner, and Keith McCormick with Keys to the City. Uh, they were all honored for their contributions to Palm Springs and revitalizing it as we, we've seen it today. Thousands of people attended events throughout the day, including a pet costume contest and an Elton John tribute band. We could not have had a better day. Next slide. Thank you to Amy Blaisdale, our special events team, and all of the city staff who worked hard to make this happen. Next slide. To our residents and visitors and all of the people who work in our city, thank you so much for making Palm Springs truly like no place else. All right. So, uh, City Manager, I believe you are gonna start us off.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Uh, we wanted to take just a few minutes today to give you an update on homelessness, uh, efforts in the city. So it's only been a few weeks since I've, uh, been here, but it's pretty clear to me that, uh, really nothing is more important than working on solutions to homelessness. Uh, I've gotten clear direction from all of you about the high priority of this, uh, issue. I've gotten clear feedback from the community about how important this is. So, um, that part is unambiguous. Uh, as council and the community knows, uh, the city and the, uh, county are working as fast as possible to build out the navigation center at 3589 McCarthy Street. And just a few key benchmarks on that that I thought would be helpful for you and the community to know. So Tilden Coil has been selected as a general contractor for that, uh, for that work. Uh, we're out to bid right now to the subcontractors to do this demo, the site work, building renovation, utility work, landscaping, and all those bids are due on April 20th. So that's coming up, uh, very quickly. City plan check work has all been completed and building permits are ready for issuance. Uh, SCE work is on target. There was, I know you had discussion about that a couple months or so ago, but the SCE, SCE work is on target and new electrical switchgear, uh, equipment is, uh, on order. The contract for the 80 modular units has been awarded and is due for delivery in September. Uh, as you know, Martha's Kitchen has been selected as a service provider and they've been a great partner with us, uh, in working through this, uh, getting to this point. And we'll be giving, uh, I anticipate giving council more detailed updates in the coming, uh, council meetings, just to keep you up to date. I know how important this project, uh, is to everyone. I also wanted to let you know that our homeless outreach coordinator, Roman Ruiz, has been hired and he's now on the job. I wanted to bring him here today to introduce him to all of you and to the community. He couldn't be here, but at the next meeting, we'll have him here. So you can put a name with the face and we'll talk a little bit about the work that he's doing. Uh, but despite all of this, uh, we know that many, many of our homeless population will not be ready to go right into their own separate modular unit at the navigation, uh, center right away. We've had a lot of discussions with our service providers, with the police department, the police chief, and we really feel we're, there's a little something there that we need to pay close attention to. We want to be very proactive to identify additional, uh, to identify additional and immediate next steps on, on issues related to the homelessness. We know that a controlled first point of entry navigation center will help people prepare for success at the McCarthy facility. Some people initially, we know, will only choose to use, use our current access center. Some will be prepared for the stability of a first point, what I call it is a first point of entry navigation, uh, facility. And some will be ready to find security and stability at the McCarthy Center right away. But it's kind of, uh, all three of those points. We, what we're trying to think about is how do we build out a continuum, continuum of care? Because we know that folks need to enter and progress through a continuum of care before we can ever get them ready for permanent supportive housing, finding their first affordable housing unit, that sort of thing. So we're trying to think holistically, um, about where people can eventually, you know, how they can eventually progress through the system. Uh, many places, and you know, I've worked at some before, that have implemented other additional, uh, strategies such as mobile mental health, uh, uh, street medicine programs, uh, that I think I've already, uh, I'm involved in having conversations with people about those sort of additional resources that maybe sort of mitigate in with, uh, everything else we're doing with the housing portion of that. So we're, we're continuing to look at all kinds of things to try and be progressive, proactive, to try and get out ahead of doing everything we can. We're working very closely with Martha's Kitchen, Palm Springs Police Department, and Riverside County on the build-out model of this system. Uh, and I've asked them all to speak, uh, this evening. So, uh, I know we're gonna have Sam Holland back, the CEO of, of Martha's, is gonna step up here in just a second and, uh, have a few words. He's gonna talk about some slides, some other things that we, that we're trying to give some consideration to, along with Jonathan Espy, who's the, uh, chairman of the board at Martha's, and Rosa Verdusco, uh, who's their staff manager and coordinator of services with them. And then after that, I've asked Chief Mills to, uh, speak to us a little bit about some of the issues that they're facing and why this build-out system is gonna be so important to us. And we also have Greg Rodriguez here from the, from the county, who's going to talk a little bit about some of the resources, uh, that, uh, the county wants to work with us on this process. Greg's, uh, I've really enjoyed getting to know Greg in my short time here. We've had some great discussions and I know he's gonna be a great, uh, partner with us. Uh, so, um, let me, at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to, uh, to Martha's Kitchen to go over their piece and then I'm gonna come back at the end.
Hello. I just wanna say a couple of words on homelessness in Palm Springs and the easiest way for me probably to do it, so I don't get off track, is to go through the slides for you. We could go through, oh, okay. Um, currently in Palm Springs, um, we know that the homeless count is rising, uh, but there are limited resources here in town to, to deal with it at the point, at this point. Uh, we do have the access center over here by the airport. Um, it's open eight to five daily. Um, but again, provides limited resources, um, can provide a snack and drinks, um, but still leaves gaps in, in the needed, um, fight against homelessness, basically, to provide for those people out there that, that need some help. Um, as I mentioned, we know that the numbers are growing in Palm Springs. Um, and at this point, without any overnight shelter beds in the city, law enforcement has limited ability to move these people from encampments or other places that they might be, um, trying to find a place to sleep. We do plan on running a warm weather shelter here again this summer. Um, we have secured funding for that. So the plan currently will be to run that through, um, from July 1st through September 30th and approximately 20 to 25 beds at the access center. Um, but the number of beds will be based on whatever we can fit in there safely. So it could be 15, it could be 25. If we can fit 30, we'll try, but we'll do our best to put as many people in there as we can. Um, to create more options for everybody and for the homeless, um, we're proposing that we create a new site in addition to the access center that will have 95 beds, um, consisting of both overnight and emergency shelter, with emergency shelter being typically 90 to 120 days, day. Um, by doing that, um, it will help get, obviously, people off the streets. It will give law enforcement a little more ability to offer people that they see out in encampments or elsewhere, a place to go instead of stay on the street. Um, the way that we'll, we envision working it, it'll be on a referral basis. Um, Palm Springs Police Department and Martha's Village can refer people to have admission and they will be given a bed. We haven't got all the details worked out, but we plan on them having a bed and letting them stay and not having it be just a nighttime shelter. So they would have a place to stay during the day. Um, we would figure out something for meals and try to accommodate them that way. And as long as they were there, they would keep their bed until they were no longer around at entry time to, to claim it. Um, let's see. We don't know if you, if you're all familiar with us, but we have a really good reputation in Nidio for being a good neighbor. We go out of our way to make sure that the neighbors around us are not affected as little as possible anyway, with, with the people that come and go from our facility. Um, I think same thing with, um, warm weather shelter here in the city, um, at the United Methodist Church. I think, um, the neighbors were pretty happy with us the two years we were there. They had a good experience. So we're hoping that we can do the same here with this and, and make it a very well-run location. Um, and again, the police department, if, if we can get this set up, it will give the police department a little more leeway in finding places for people that, that they know need help, but currently have no place to send them to. Plans for the next couple of years, um, like we just mentioned, warm weather shelter this summer. That would be 20 to 25 beds approximately. Um, we would like to set up this emergency navigation center as quickly as possible. Um, it's just a matter of how long it takes us to secure the bids and get it built, basically. We're ready to move on it as soon as we get approval at some point. Um, and of course, we have a navigation center that's currently being built and will open up next year. Um, just a couple pictures. This is an example of what some sprung structures could look like on the site that we proposed to put 95 beds on. What this doesn't show is, um, another option, which could be part of this also, which would be the tiny homes, which I think you probably are all, maybe familiar with from other areas that have used them. And in summary, um, like I said, we know that the homeless count is growing. We know there are limited options right now to, to help the situation. And we would just like to partner with Palm Springs and do what we can to help the situation and improve the conditions for the homeless. Uh, we think this will create some additional steps, um, with the overnight housing plus the emergency. And then when the navigation opens up, that'll be transitional. So there'll be a good complement of stages that the homeless could go through in their quest to become self-sufficient again. Um, I think everything else on there, we've already covered. So I think I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you for listening.
Um, unless you have one. No, okay. Go ahead, Chief.
Well, good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the time to talk about this important topic. One of the first questions we get anytime we contact somebody when we're conducting enforcement is, "Okay, you don't want me here. Where would you like me?" And that's a tough answer, uh, question to answer for people, especially for officers who are very concerned. Two of our, uh, officers have, uh, family members who are homeless. So we deal with this with a great deal of compassion. But at the same time, in order to continue our process of really trying to clean up some of these hotspots, we've had crime as well as, uh, public health problems. Um, it's important for us to consider other options such as an emergency shelter. For this emergency shelter to work, it'll take a few things, in my opinion. One is the right facility. And I think that, uh, this looks like it's a good process and a good path to have the right facility that's controlled, that's safe, that's, that's enclosed. The second is the right team to run the facility. And, uh, since my time here in Palm Springs, uh, I just wanna applaud Martha's Village and the staff, uh, for all the work that they have done, uh, in our city so far. They've been, they've been very good collaborators and very good partners. So we thank them. From a, from a policing standpoint, one of the most critical pieces is that we need tightly controlled access. That means a few things. One is that the referrals come from the police and Martha's Village. Uh, we need to have the ability as a police department to be able to say, "You cannot live under this bus shelter. You need to go over to this location. We have a bed available for you right now." And then take them over there and help them get that, get into that bed and get situated. Um, that is, that is tightly controlled. What we cannot allow, in my opinion, from looking at this for the past 15 years, is just random walk-up access. Because if that happens, people will congregate to a location where they think they can get services. And that is not the purpose for me of an emergency shelter. Uh, people need to be, and, uh, brought in there, be screened, be talked to, um, and have a variety of other things I'll mention in a second. Uh, I do believe that if we have it too open, that other cities will try to bring the people in need in those cities to us. And that becomes problematic, uh, from a variety of perspectives. They are certainly welcome, uh, to build facilities, to feed people in their own cities. But we wanna try to take care of the people in Palm Springs first. And once we prove success, then, uh, we can certainly take a look at other things later. It also needs to be strict enforcement of the rules that people sign when they go into a facility such as this. That violence is unacceptable, that open use of drugs is unacceptable, uh, that stealing from local businesses is unacceptable. And if they do that, there has to be a consequence, which is you lose your right to be there. If we don't do something of that level, it becomes more of an enabling, uh, issue than it is a, uh, a, a way to help people, um, better themselves. Um, that brings up that there should be a covenant of good behavior, behavior towards neighbors. So that that behavior, uh, is very visible to, to the, not only the neighbors, but to the people living there, including the people, their neighbors inside the facility. And I've seen that work in the past. Um, there also needs to be, uh, for this to work well, a, the ability to say that you are seeking help and that placement is your highest priority for you personally. So that, uh, whether there's a document or an explanation that they sign, uh, to, so they thoroughly understand that staff in this particular situation are not there to prolong the use of, of, uh, the lifestyle that they've had, but to improve, uh, them as well as our community. Uh, anything that violates those community standards, uh, must be dealt with, uh, so that people are no longer there. And then lastly, uh, I want to assure you that, that PSPD will make this a priority hotspot. Wherever we locate something, uh, that becomes our highest priority for heavy patrol, uh, consistent enforcement, uh, and referrals to, uh, opportunities for people to get help. Uh, it has to be a focal point for our department. Our officers have done an amazing job, uh, taking on the four hotspots that we had. Uh, the problems at each of those locations have substantially been reduced. Um, and we can continue that. Uh, as we normal, as we stabilize those locations, we can move on to others. And wherever, um, this winds up being a part of in our community, uh, that will be a focal point for PSPD. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. And we have Greg Rodriguez from the county.
I'll take a lot less time than I usually do and no PowerPoint this time. But, um, first of all, I wanted to say that, um, your city manager has jumped on this faster than I've probably seen any new city manager do. You can tell he's dedicated this. Um, I think too, he laid out what the good timeline that we really have expedited even since the last time we reported you on the development. I think it needs to be made clear that the development of this property, the navigation center, has never stopped. A huge shout out to Jay, um, to Flynn, and to Joelle for the great work that the city has done on this as well. What I'm here tonight is, and I think they've laid out a really good continuum of care. Um, as Sam said, uh, the county had already allocated the $600,000 for the, uh, uh, summer shelter that we've done for the last four or five years in the city of Palm Springs. Um, and then we are looking at the possibility of being able to reallocate some ARPA dollars. Um, you know, the county has already significantly invested, um, in this city. And of course, as a resident, I will continue to advocate for that. Uh, but looking at how we can, uh, reallocate again to build out this continuum of care. Um, I'm heart, much more heartened that I see the progress on the navigation center. But like you, I realize that this problem has to be addressed as soon as we possibly can. realize that this problem has to be addressed as soon as we possibly can. And even though Martha's has talked about the sprung structure, you know, we haven't really specifically identified a location, there may be some other options, but I just want you to know that at least your city manager, Martha's, being one of the best providers, I think, in the county, and us as a county, in whatever way we can continue the partnership that we're here for you.
Thank you to all of our partners. Appreciate them coming here to talk a little bit about this. Just a couple final points, and then we'll certainly open it up. Any questions you have for any of us? You know, I've seen firsthand some of the point-of-entry navigation center systems that are in place and that are working. A good example is the city of Huntington Beach, right on Beach Boulevard, leading right into the beach, has built out a first point-of-entry navigation center that really works really well. They have a good neighbor policy. And, you know, at some point, very quickly, maybe we might round up a bus, and anybody who wants to take a two-hour drive, we can go look at their facility and see firsthand kind of how they're doing some of this. We don't want to overpromise on any of this. We know all of this is really hard work. All of you know we've had significant encampment issues, especially around the Lawrence Crosley area. There's a Walmart store there, where I know the police chief and all of you spent a lot of time trying to, you know, help people get off the encampments that were going along there. And our police department reminds me what a hotspot area that is. Mr. Rodriguez reminds me of some of the commitments we have with Building C, I think it is, as part of the McCarthy Navigation Center. So, you know, what is the long-term future of that as a controlled, effective place that could be part of our continuum of care? So those are some of the things that we've been thinking about. And so what I want to just leave council members with is that none of this is going to be cheap. We have a lot of work to do. We're not asking council to approve anything this evening. We're just, we wanted to introduce some of these additional concepts that all of us on the team behind you, we've been working really as diligently as we can to try and get some solutions. We know how important it is to all of you, and also to the community. We mainly kind of want any input from you. Are we on the right track? Is this what you're looking for from us? And if we are, and if we have the green light from you to just keep forging ahead, doing what we're doing, we'll try and come back as quickly as we can, maybe as soon as our next council meeting, with much greater detail about things like financing, procurement, structure, scheduling, all of that stuff that I think will be important for you to be thinking about in terms of trying to free up the resources that we're going to need to, you know, keep plowing ahead. So the whole team is here. We're committed, and we're here to answer any questions that you might have. So, thank you, council.
Thank you very much to all of you. Council, do you have questions or comments? Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to, because I think, you know, I've heard some of this, but for a lot of members of the public, this might be brand-new. So just to clarify, the navigation center is going full steam ahead. We're not giving up on that, right? So it's just...
Oh, yes. Yeah. And that was the point in my comments, right in the beginning. We are full speed ahead on that. Everything is, we're working as quickly as we can.
And we've built that sort of like what the ideal navigation center, which is part of the reason it's taking longer.
Yeah, because that facility has individual pod situations where, you know, someone who's experiencing homelessness is going to have their own sort of individualized area, where they can have some of their own privacy, and hopefully get a feel for, you know, hopefully moving on to permanent supportive housing, maybe affordable housing, maybe their own apartment. So we're, all do speed as quickly as we can.
And we, from the images, this is not, we're not building a building. What we're talking about, we're talking about something, a prefabricated space that we could use.
That is one option, some prefabricated space that we could use. As Greg indicated, we also have some obligations to the county on, what is it, Building C? Building C? So on the site. So we're looking at a lot of different options about what we can do.
But the idea that we're being presented today is something that could happen relatively quickly.
Yes.
That could deal with this crisis that we're in.
Yes.
And I just want to clarify a couple other things. So we talked about that the police in Martha's Village would refer people. That's the only way people can get in?
Yeah, the, so the...
You can't walk in, right?
No, the idea, and I think both Martha's and the chief both indicated, we want to have a situation where the police department and Martha's Village have really close, tight protocols about how they're working together literally every day, tracking how many beds are available, who's in there, who's been referred in there. And then that person has safety and security of having their space. If they had a shopping cart, they'll have some protection for their space there, and then they can get back on their feet.
Okay.
Can I add on to that?
Yeah.
Will there be other service providers that can contact Martha's or to recommend someone? I mean, we do have several community groups that are working directly with our unhoused, and who would also likely have recommendations. What would be the process for those groups?
Yeah, I mean, typically, on all of these navigation center facilities, there's people in the community that want to donate, they want to help, they want to volunteer, maybe there's partnerships with...
I mean, in terms of recommendations, for instance, Queer Works has a mobile shower unit that they bring around, specifically targeting the unhoused. If Queer Works were to come to Martha's and say, "There's someone we've been providing showers to for X number of weeks, we think that they would be a good person to go into the center," can they get a referral that way?
Yeah, I have to, you know, an organization, we're looking to partner with anybody and everybody that we can, so...
Thank you.
But the point being is that it will come from an agency, and so that's how we'll sort of control, A, to as much as possible that they're Palm Springs residents.
Correct.
And B, to have some kind of sense of who they are. We mentioned, from Martha's Village, mentioned the good neighbor policy. We're not looking at a residential district to put this in, right? Or is it a residential? We don't know yet.
No, I mean, we have to, we want to be very sensitive to wherever a facility would go, whatever space that we're building out, whatever, you know, however we're trying to do it. The important thing to remember is, this is a facility that, this is a facility that's a controlled environment. That's why I think it's good to see another facility in action. And you get a feel for, people aren't coming and going. They have a place and a reason for being there, and the staff that are there are trained to work with folks to help get them the right services that they need, and get them ready to kind of move along on the continuum of care.
Okay. And I know in the navigation center, Martha's had a whole security and promise that they would have, and we'll ensure that there's something similar here.
Yeah, absolutely. There's security 24/7 on all these locations, both for the safety and security of the residents that are there, but also the safety and security of the staff themselves. And that's why you have to have that real close working relationship with your police department.
Okay. And I guess you talked about the street medicines, too. So are you talking to some of the local hospitals?
Interesting. Well, you know, we have a lot of tremendous resources, and I haven't really spoken to any of these groups, but we, you know, we have the Inland Empire Health Plan, we have the Desert Medical Center, and we can partner with all of, it's not in anybody's interest to bring homeless individuals to our emergency rooms. That's not, that's not the recipe for long-term success.
And I guess, you know, lastly, I just want to make a comment that, you know, I think we are in a crisis situation, and I don't think anybody doubts that. I know, you know, the police have done a great job in sort of helping with these hotspots, but we've seen people just have to move around because there is no place for them to go. So, you know, my personal view is, it sounds like the questions have been answered, probably still some more details to work out, as long as it's not a drop-in center, you know, having the support of the chief and the police is probably key to this, because they're probably dealing with this most from anyone. I understand that this is, it's probably better to have something that they might have an easier access, easier barrier to entry, or lower barrier to entry, which is what this sounds like. It's not obviously an ideal navigation center, but that is what we are building elsewhere. So do you see the potential that this would keep going, or that this would end when the new navigation center owns?
Well, I mean, you know, it'll be an ongoing evaluation process. I think our navigation center on McCarthy Street is, it has room for 80 individuals. We have, you know, when we look at our point-in-time count, our number is much larger than that. Some number much larger than that. And so, you know, and then hopefully, you know, people are progressing through, and people will leave the McCarthy site, and they'll go on to a better place in their lives, and then somebody can take their place. So that's, you know, that's, you know, that's part of, you know, trying to, a holistic approach.
Right. And this will, I just have one other question just on this. We will have mental health and drug addiction potential, sort of referral, help some of the people come in somehow?
Yeah, usually, that's part of the navigation process. If people are conveying that to our trained staff that are there, they know how to get them to people that can help them and work with them, and maybe have people visit the facility itself and spend time. So that's how you kind of build that partnership to kind of move along.
Well, I just want to say, I do think we're in a crisis. I like the idea that this could open quickly while we're still, you know, not letting up steam on the navigation center. I appreciate you've been here a month, and you've recognized the problem that we have, and I know Martha's has, well, and obviously, the police have had to deal with it. So, you know, I, my view is, I'll wait to see other questions, but I think, you know, this sounds like a great option to move forward quickly and address what really is an emergency situation right now. And I think, I know from the residents and the business community and the homeless, you know, service providers, that everybody recognizes the need for more help in the city. And if that's what we can do, then I think this is absolutely what we should do to move forward.
Thank you so much. Do you have other comments or questions? Councilmember Middleton.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Excuse me. I'd like to start with a couple of questions for Martha's.
And if you can introduce yourself, so the public knows who you are, that would be great.
Hello, everyone. I'm Rosa Bertusco, Executive Vice President with Martha's Village and Kitchen.
Jonathan Espy, Co-Chairman of the Board of Directors of Martha's Village and Kitchen.
Dan Hollenbeck, CEO.
And again, thank you on behalf of everyone in Palm Springs for the work and for the urgency that you're bringing to this issue, and to the calls that you received from our city manager. So we're very, very appreciative. All of this comes back to being able to respond quickly with staffing that is trained and experienced and ready to go. And in every endeavor, that is a critical question today. So what can you say to reassure us that if we move forward, you in fact have the people with the expertise in place to be able to manage this program?
What we've been doing since we started operating the multiple programs here with the warm weather and cool weather and the access center, is that we've been working with our current staff on enhancing their skills. And we've been having these meetings with them before coming here, because one thing we won't do is present you a project that we don't believe will be successful, because that is, you know, Martha's has a reputation, like you guys have heard here before, so success is vital to us. So we've been working with staff members, adding their, enhancing their skills, and also having the time to be proactive and posting the jobs for those line staff that are needed is vital. We don't like when we get calls 10 days prior to opening it up, and we're in a tight spot, because now you need to staff an entire facility in 10 days to operate. So this gives us time. We've been preparing for this, working with our staff in-house, and of course, opening those job positions, too, where we have enough time to train everybody.
So one of the most difficult things that I can imagine is the work that you have to do, in that you're dealing with vulnerable people who are in need, oftentimes distrustful and resistant to the rules that need to be put in place for anything to be successful. So give us some sense of how it is that you go about developing that trust on the part of the people who are coming into Martha's, as well as imposing the rules that need to apply.
Been in Palm Springs the last three years, or going on three years, and the best, the only answer I could give you is building the trust with the clients. They knew who Martha's is. We were new to Palm Springs three, maybe I didn't have that answer for you three years ago, but I know that now clients are familiar with our services. They know the type of quality of services they're going to receive when they go to our facilities. And they know that they're held accountable for certain behaviors, and ensuring that our priority is just to provide services, but we also have to protect our staff and our volunteers and everybody involved. And I believe clients know that. Warm weather's a perfect example. It was an overnight shelter type of service, but if the rules were not followed, then the services would not be provided. And I believe clients know that. It was very important that the community, when we did at the Methodist Church, that the community members felt that trust with us, too, so therefore, we had a control of foot traffic and clients not littering around the neighborhood. So clients knew those conversations we were having with them every day. I had those conversations myself, where at the end of the night, I'm like, "Okay, I'm going home, guys. Make sure I don't get called in the middle of the night if something happened." And they're like, "Oh, no, nothing's going to happen." And I don't, and I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the police department reported that there was less calls during that time that we were operating the warm weather. I know during cool weather, we didn't receive any calls in the middle of the night. Again, it's the good neighbor, but clients knowing that, yes, we are providing services, but yes, there's rules, and if you want those services.
Thank you. And I, my experience with Martha's is the rules do apply, and the result of that is we're not receiving complaints from the neighbors where you're located. And that is something that's absolutely critical to all of us. So thank you. Couple of questions for the police chief. And Chief, again, thank you for the work that you've done and for, that all of our officers are doing out there. And there are as many stories about how someone becomes homeless as there are individuals that are homeless, and it stretches from young children who do not have homes, that are in our schools, to senior citizens with severe mental health issues, and everything in between. But some of the individuals who are out on our streets are in fact committing crimes and disturbing their neighbors and not asking for help. So could you talk about some of the kinds of issues that your officers face with that segment of the population? And again, I know it's not the entire population.
So as we've stated before, there are kind of three groups that we have seen in the homeless community, and that might be pretty broad, but those who want and need and will take help immediately. And there are people like Martha's Kitchen and the county who have done an amazing job helping those families and those folks get off the street. The second group are those that are either so addicted to drugs or mentally ill that they don't know what they need. And I think that's where we can really make a big difference in helping those folks get into the long-term help that the city is graciously going to provide as soon as we can. The third group is the element that I think you're addressing, those who desire to live a lifestyle where they are living in a place that may or may not be where they're from, that are choosing to commit crime, to either fuel a drug habit, or that's just the way they have chosen to do that. It's exacerbated by a few things. One is the deinstitutionalization of the prisons without adequate resources to send people to. I think we can all agree that, you know, we would love to see people released from the prisons and so forth, but to be put on the street directly with no support or minimal support is problematic. And so some of those folks are the ones that we really are challenged with. And that's what our focal point has been up to this juncture, is those who are committing the most crime and disturbances in our community.
So, if we open this type of a facility on an emergency basis, what steps are we going to need to take to ensure that there is not drug use in or around those facilities? And what kind of resources is that going to require from you?
So, we will be fully prepared to assist Martha's Village or any service provider to make sure that the, the facility stays a safe place for people to be. And again, as we talked about earlier, violations of the community standards is what should be an eviction from the, from the location. The purpose of that is for us to work with the village, Martha's Village, to make sure that we are helping them understand what we're seeing in the field, communicating with them on a regular basis to determine people that have not chosen to improve themselves or have the capacity to do so. And that becomes a different issue, whether it's mental health or the police.
So, I hear frequently, far too frequently frankly, from individuals who say that the police in Palm Springs have their hands tied by Palm Springs City Council that refuses to give you either the resources or the ability to respond to homelessness.
This is the resource we need to be able to respond, respond effectively to helping people get off the street. If they choose not to get off the street, then that becomes a different matter. And then whether it's citations or custodial arrests, we will go through the process as we can. I certainly don't want to paint this as the panacea to all of our problems, but it is a great step in the right direction for us to have the authority, the constitution and the legal authority to tell people, you cannot sleep where you're sleeping currently. And, and that will, we will absolutely do that.
Thank you. So, I'm very supportive of what we are doing and what's being proposed. I think we need a sense of urgency in everything that we do in this area. There are far, far too many people that are on the street. And again, every cause that has been thought of is true at times as to why people are on the street, but we've got to have the beds available and we do not have those beds available right now. And the sooner we get them, the better off we will all be. There is no higher priority in my mind than us to respond to this issue. And I want to thank the county for the work they've done and everyone else who's in, who's out there fighting and trying to make this happen. And the last thing I want to say is that we are still, even with the actions that are being proposed now, simply being responsive and reactionary. There is a growing population of people who, for a variety of reasons, are dropping out of society and the number of homeless is growing at an alarming rate. That's not due to any one city anywhere failing to be responsive. It is because there are an increasing number of people who are dropping out and we as a society need to step back and understand fully what it is going to take to help people not to get on the street in the first place. And in a political statement, if you believe you can respond to homelessness and never have to leave your political comfort zone, you do not understand the problem. All of us are going to have to be willing to challenge our political assumptions in order to be able to deal with this issue and deal with it effectively. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have other comments or questions from councilmembers? Councilmember Holstich.
Thank you. I just want to thank Martha's Village and Kitchen for bringing this forward and really thank staff. When we first, when I first joined city council in 2017, Martha's was helping people throughout the county and throughout the Coachella Valley, but didn't have a site in Palm Springs. And one of the things that I'm so proud that we've done over the last few years was give them grant funding to start in Palm Springs and they've just continued to say yes and jump at new opportunities, even when they're stretched thin and they're putting together warm weather shelters in the middle of the summer and housing people at the access center. They continue to step up and say, yes, we can do more. We see that there's more need and we want to fill the gap. So, I just really want to applaud their leadership and thank them for the work that they're doing in the city of Palm Springs, for continuing to say yes to the challenges that we face together as a city. We really appreciate your leadership and continuing to step up for the, for us. I know this will be a successful project and I fully support all of the, the work that staff and Martha's is doing to bring this forward, to provide an access center so people can get into housing right away and then also achieve transitional housing. I know that the council is doing and we have been doing proactive work on addressing homelessness, including developing affordable housing. So, I look forward to looking at that data so we can continue to address this problem with urgency. I just want to applaud the county. Thank you for your partnership and Greg Rodriguez personally, who spearheaded this and a number of projects. And also our police chief for really getting a handle on collecting data and reporting to city council what is happening on the ground in the city of Palm Springs. So, thank you to everyone for your work on this and I'm proud to, I'll support it as it moves forward through design and hopefully comes to fruition.
Thank you so much. Councilmember DeHart.
Thank you. City Manager Scott, I really appreciate you jumping in feet first, head first, body first to tackle this. And it certainly is a massive issue just based off of the comments we've heard today and from fellow councilmembers. But I think it's, and I know the community appreciates the fact that you're standing here, council's providing the opportunity for you to, to share with the community. What are the next steps in this fight for homelessness? And, and being able to share that with the community, I think is, is, is really important that they get to see the end-all solution isn't the navigation center. You know, the navigation center is one piece of the pie. And I've, I've said, as I talked in the community all of last year, we, there's, the north part of town isn't the only part of town that's going to have services that can help deal with this, with the homelessness issue. Can we, can we ask that, that this emergency, the emergency shelter that is another tool in the arsenal to help fight homelessness, that it's not in the north part of town? That it is in a different part of, of town where we know we're making services available throughout the city, not just in one pocket?
Yes, Councilman. I am losing a little bit of sleep over this issue, but it is important and it is critical. And I think there's, you can't just roll out one, one idea and then that takes care of it. It's really a multidisciplinary issue. And even on the housing spectrum, there's, as we've talked about, there's different steps along the way on the housing piece. And then you throw in the complexities of mental health, you, street medicine, it's, and then, and then building out, even going out farther and then building out, I think as Councilmember Holstich just said, affordable housing solutions and other things. So, even after people leave the McCarthy facility and they've been living there in their modular unit for three, four months and they're doing well and they've got a job and they're coming back and forth and now do we have a permanent supportive housing unit for them to go to? Do we have an affordable housing unit for them to go to? They're back on their feet, they're stabilized, they're getting their life together. So, yeah, it's all of that. There's no, there's no one size fits all, one easy, snap your fingers, do one thing and it's all going to go away. And, and you know, the other part that the chief talked about, you know, I've learned the city of Indio has a number, I think, a number of beds, probably over 200 beds that they're using to help in their community, but this is a regional, it's a regional issue. We have, you know, all cities have to join in in this, in this fight and this challenge to help, help reduce homelessness. It's, it's not an issue that respects political boundaries, municipal boundaries. And so, you know, we all have to be working on this together.
Yeah, excellent. So, I, I think, you know, the community being able to see this is one more tool that's being used. The emergency shelter coming in, you know, you've mentioned tonight and, and I know the community's listening because folks talk to me about it. They know it's not a one-stop issue. They know it's a very complicated issue. But to hear that we're working with community partners to address the mobile mental health opportunity that might be there to offer that service to the community, the street medicine, being able to have teams for street medicine providers, you know, those are all additional elements that I'm hearing you all are working on to bring back to council in the days ahead is to make our overall comprehensive plan. That's right?
Yes. I mean, we have great, we have great medical, medical staff, great medical professionals in this community, people with a lot of resources in a lot of different areas. So, I think it's not just the city, it's not just the county, it's not just Martha's. There's probably a little bit of a role in a lot of these areas for folks to partner with us. And I would, I'd say if anybody's watching and they, they've been having some thoughts about some of these different ideas that might kind of, you know, correspond with what we're trying to do, to please reach out to us, you're going to find a whole bunch of folks who are more than, more than happy to figure out how they fit into the equation of what we're doing. It's, as we've always said, this isn't just a police problem. Police can't solve this by themselves. Martha's can't solve it by themselves. The county, the city, we're, it's, it's, it requires the, the really dedication of a lot of people.
Yeah, I appreciate that and I certainly am supportive. I, I, I want to support this effort that you're bringing forward. And just ask that as, as we, you bring to details to the council next, is that you're, you're making sure that you're asking us for the tools that are needed for all of our teams that are working on, on this across the board, police, everybody that's involved, that council's aware of the, what we need to provide so we can make sure that those tools are there. But I'm certainly in support as, as we move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you to team at Martha's and to Greg Rodriguez and to city staff and our city manager for all of your work on this. We really appreciate it. I, I agree with everyone that this is of the utmost priority for our city. And I also just want to ask if we can have shelter space available before July in terms of the warm weather space? Because as we know, even today, we've topped, reached 100 degrees and it would be great to, to have some, some cooling sites if possible. And just want to raise that in terms of what, what we would need to do as a council in order to make that happen.
Well, that's why, and, you know, that's why we wanted to talk about the very first phase, that we wanted to make sure the community knew, that knew that Martha's was, was moving forward with their continuation of their plan last year. It's, it's something that we can have at our disposal, which is, which is going to be very important. As we all know, it's not, it's not by any means the, you know, where we need to be, but at least it's a, you know, they're doing their part to help us out.
Great. Thank you and I appreciate all of the work. All right. We will move on to the next item then. Thank you. Our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda, may amend the order at urgency items, note abstentions or no votes on consent calendar items or request consent calendar items be removed for separate discussion. I'd like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items staff or council member would like removed from consent calendar for separate discussion or vote? Councilmember DeHart.
Yeah, I'd like to pull one M.
Is that N as in Nancy?
M as in Mary.
M as in Mary. Thank you.
I'd like to pull one, one N as in Nancy.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much. Do we have a, a motion to accept the agenda with items one M as in Mary and one N as in Nancy to be discussed separately?
Second.
Thank you. And city clerk, can we have a vote, please?
Councilmember Middleton?
I'm.
Mayor Protan Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Garner?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. To our city attorney, Jeff Ballinger, can you please provide a report of closed session?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The city council met in closed session earlier this afternoon and discussed the items that are listed on the agenda. The only reportable action was the city council voted five to zero to join the settlement in the opioid litigation. This is the second phase of that and so the city will be receiving funds once that settlement is finalized by the other parties. Other than that, there's no reportable action.
Thank you very much. The next item is public testimony. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items only. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you are speaking about. Please note that the time for public hearings will be taken at the time of public hearing, although we don't have any today, so that's fine. And general public comments for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. I think we have one speaker, Michael Joseph Pitkin.
Michael Joseph Pitkin, all allocations. There is a City of Palm Springs employee who is synced into my City of Palm Springs library account. Every time I use the library internet, there is someone synced into the Palm Springs City beyondtrust.com remote support. When I have informed the librarian, she calls IT. I watched IT remove and sign out of beyondtrust.com. After IT signs out, all of my extensions go back to normal. Vigilantes in the library then start cussing. This tells me it's intentional civil rights violations and why my emails for over the last year are not getting through. Cease and desist. Speaking of civil rights, Articles of Incorporation of the Well in the Desert. The specific purpose of this corporation is to serve the poor and homeless in the Coachella Valley by providing meals at least five, five days a week and distributing other food, distributing clothing, providing showering and laundry, facilities, professional counseling, job training and placement, including providing a mailing address and phone number for job seekers and others to use. Assist in the application process in obtaining governmental services such as food stamps, medical, et cetera. Temporary shelter and the coordination with other agencies that provide services to the poor and the homeless. The corporation is an ecumenical organization and worship services will be voluntary and non-denominational. February 6, 1996, Wayne McKinney, M.D. A year ago, when I inquired at the Well in the Desert about some of these services, instead of being told they are unable to provide services, instead I was yelled and screamed at for even mentioning them. The Well in the Desert has to provide these services in order to maintain their tax internal revenue code organization without propaganda. The Well in the Desert is in gross violation and has violated my civil rights.
At this time, there are no other public comments and we will move on to the consent calendar. I do have one correction for item one B. Our pledge leader Samantha Alverdeen informs me that she is five years old, not four, so if we can correct that. And then Mayor Protan, you had a comment.
I had one comment, which not, I mean, that wasn't pulled, which was one I regarding the application for PS Bottle Shop and I just wanted to congratulate them on a local business expanding, especially one that focuses on LGBTQ plus BIPOC women-owned brands and local brands. And I think it's great to see them have some success in our city.
Thank you very much. So, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar without items one M as in Mary and one N as in Nancy to remove for separate discussion. And just the one note regarding one B. Do we have a motion?
One.
Second. All right. Roll call, please.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. At this time, we will now move to item one M as in Mary, which is the appropriation of funds for the pillars of Palm Springs Public Art Project. Jay, all you.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members. This is a request to appropriate $300,000 for a substantial project on the Talkwoods Medians. And it's a project that would convey welcome and values to the visitors of Palm Springs coming into the downtown area from the airport. So the project entails soliciting artists to prepare column artwork, pillar artwork at six locations on the Palm Springs Medians. And they will reflect different equities through the artwork themes. And the cost for each of these pillars is allocated $50,000, thus 50,000 times a six would produce a $300,000 project. And we are happy to answer questions. I say we because Vice Chair Gary Armstrong of the Public Arts Commission is also present to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart, did you want to address this?
Yes, thank you. I pulled, and thank you, Jay, I appreciate that. I asked for the item to be pulled so we can do a couple things. One is to say thank you to the Arts Commission for the work to put together this type of program for the City of Palm Springs. I think it certainly fits the, the, the character of Palm Springs, and I, I appreciate the work that went into creating the pillars program overall. Some of the public comment that was received, I do want to point out that on page, I don't, page seven in item one M, at the very top of the page, it uses the word desired themes. And I think we can, I request that we strike desired, but the themes that are to be used in the pillars that are going to be, are the designs that are going to be solicited to the artists are all based on creativity, equality, serenity, diversity, civility, and community. They're not desired, but they are, they are the specific categories that are going out. And having received that from our public comment that was sent in to council, I just wanted to point that out, that, that this is the intent of the program. And, and with that, I fully support it. And, and again, thanks to Vice Chair Gary. Good job, I appreciate that. And we look forward to the next project that you got coming, that's going to top this one. So thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I have some, just a couple comments and requests. I drive that street every day, and the horses, are they, they're planned to be relocated to somewhere else in the city?
Yes, those, there are plans to relocate them. The Public Arts Commission, however, has not solidified those, will finalize those discussions. First is the discussion of purchasing the horses, which are on loan still to the city. And second will be where to put them should the recommendation of purchase them and city council approve the purchase of the horses come forward. There are some possible locations. Talkwoods Creek has been mentioned, where there's an art walk of sorts. And the sense is that that might be a good location for, for these horses.
Yeah, I like that idea, people could see them up close. I, I also want to mention, the horses are kind of hard to see sometimes, and I think I've driven that street 10 times before I could really see them all. I would recommend that if we do these pillars, it'd be more like somewhat the scale of the tribal sculpture that you sort of see right away. You know, this is only for people really driving by who happen to walk on Talkwoods. I would also ask, you know, if we look at Talkwoods and the median, there's a lot of lighting that's out and some of the landscaping, there's dip lines that go nowhere that, at the time that this is unveiled, we make sure the whole median is kind of redone so that we don't put these beautiful pillars into an area that.
Absolutely. My understanding is, public work staff has that next on their list of streetscape areas to improve. They are focusing right now on Palm Canyon.
Okay, yeah. And I think, and I think we should promote it. I mean, I think we have some great public art in this city, and I think we, we've done really well promoting some of it. And other ones, we have not always done, since this is really the gateway to the city, we should really explain what it means and make sure we have the Bureau of Tourism involved from the very beginning so that they know what's coming and they have good images as well. And also advise people on how they can see it without just driving by, which is sometimes hard. But I love the project, and, and thank you, Gary, and thank you for Public Arts Commission for bringing this forward.
Thank you all very much. With that, if we can do a, a vote?
Get a motion in a second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Can we have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, city clerk.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you very much. The next item is one N as in Nancy, which is regarding a construction contract for recreation fields LED lighting upgrades. Do we have someone that can speak on that?
Madam Mayor, I'm filling in probably very poorly for Mr. Joel Montalvo, who could not be with us this evening, but I would be happy to answer any questions you might have about the project.
I think we just have some comments.
I can just make some comments on it, and also for the city manager as well. But this, this project was originally 1.8 upgrade, and then last June, the city council approved a $4 million project, and now it's potentially a $5.5 million project. And I know the prices keep going up, but it does seem that, that it'd be better if we start overestimating rather than underestimating. And I think part of the issue is that when this was approved, it was part of the whole Measure J budget, and there was other things that may not have been approved, or there's other things that, you know, that are, that are waiting to be approved that are now going to be pushed out because the money's being used. And so, I realize, and this is, I, I apologize that Joel is not here, but I think it's something that we as a city should start doing is overestimate some of these things. So we, you know, council, when we're considering, should we spend another million and a half on this project, we also can look and see what else would have been the options. Now that said, I think this is a great project, and, and I think it's nice to see something in our parks happen. But again, we've talked about a master parks plan and Parks and Recreation Plan, and this is one element of it, and it'd be, makes sense to do the thing, to do, approve a project in the scope of everything that's going on. I did have a question. When it says in the contract that the project should be completed within the time specified in the notice to proceed, do we have any idea how long that is?
I apologize, I don't have that off the top of my head, but we do establish that when we enter into the contract with the contractor. I don't believe this particular project should go on longer than 12 months.
Okay. Another question, another point I just wanted to make to the city manager is that since this is a Measure J, which is a great use of Measure J, we should look at how we can measure what percentage of Measure J comes from visitors versus residents, since it is a sales tax. And it'd be nice, I think, for the residents to know that this tax that happened primarily, which is large part funded by visitors, helped serve the residents. And the last point, maybe Flynn, you can answer this. So we, this is now required to operate under the Community Workforce Agreement.
Correct, it is.
And we've just hired a company to oversee that. So are we, they'll be working on this project?
Yes, they will be.
And are the unions now at the table, sort of working on their side of the promise as well?
Correct. We've been meeting with the unions since January. They participated in our process as we developed the RFP, and so they are on board with our Community Workforce Agreement and the projects that are subject to it.
Okay, okay. That, that's really my question, is my only thing is, once this does open, we should have a big celebration, same way we did with the downtown park, since there, there's so many people who use our, our recreation fields, both at the ballpark and Demuth, and I, and I think this is really a nice project for the community. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions? Councilmember DeHart?
Yeah, thank you. I, I support this. I think it's a great project for us to celebrate in the community for so many families that, that use our parks. And I just want to point out for the folks that are listening, it, it is $4.6 million in Measure J funds, but the, the, the job grew significantly from it was, when it was originally proposed to just be some minor changes. So it grew to be a much larger project, which is going to serve so many families and, and folks that, that use the, the Demuth Park and the use of the, the stadium and surrounding area at Sunrise. So I'm very excited about this, and I can't wait to see it completed.
All right, do we have a motion in a second?
Moved.
Can we have a vote, please?
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Mayor Gardner?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item three A, fiscal year 2021, 2022 financial audit reports of the City of Palm Springs. May we have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the council. I am here to present the fiscal year 22 financial audit reports. There is a link to each of the reports on the city's website under the Department of Finance and Treasury. Thank you. The audit is performed annually by the city's auditors, the Poon Group, and with me tonight via Zoom is Frances Kuo. Frances is the partner that oversees all of the city's audits, and she has a short presentation to present to the council.
Good evening, thank you. You can go ahead and do your presentation.
Um, I believe I shared the presentation slides with the, the city, and I'm not sure if you have a copy of that, or I should share my screen.
Frances, I'll go ahead and flip through the slides as you present.
Perfect, perfect. Okay, let's see. And if you could, um, let's see.
Run slide two, contents.
Okay. I think as I speak, it kind of jumped around to the, to the, the images, but that's okay. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and the members of city council. I'm here to present the audit for fiscal year 22 for the City of Palm Springs. So for the scope of work, we completed audit for the city's financial statement, the Public Financing Authority Financial Statement Audit, the Passenger Facility Charge Program Compliance Audit, Housing Successor Compliance, Measure J Audit, and Agree Upon Procedures on Measure D. And we have just completed also the single audit for the city's federal award program. Next slide. So some of the required communication of, next slide, please, is related to our responsibility. So we, our responsibility as an auditor is to form and express opinion about the financial statement, the fair representation of the financial statement, and to perform and to plan and perform the audit to provide reasonable assurance, not absolute assurance, because we test the transaction on a sampling basis, and to determine whether the financial statement are free from material misstatement. And during the audit process, we consider internal control over financial reporting, and then also during a single audit processing, other compliance audit, we consider the, the internal control over the compliance, compliance requirement. And these considerations are for the purpose of determine audit procedures and not necessarily provide any assurance on the internal control, but if there's any internal control matter, we will report to those charge of governance. And as part of the audit requirement, we consider whether there's any going concern issue for the city to continue for the next 12 months to operate, continue to operate. And lastly, we also require to communicate with those charge of governance, which we issue a couple of letters to those charge of governance during our planning process and during the completion audit, and also during this presentation. Next slide. So a couple other required communication, first is related to the ethic and independence. So we as auditor has to comply with all relevant ethical requirement regarding independence, and then the independence related to the independence in appearance and independence in fact, and also independence over the, the, the non-audit services we provide for the city, including assisting the city preparing the financial statement. And we are also required to communicate some significant accounting policy, which are described in the note one to the city's financial statement. And during the year of 2022, the city implement GASP 87 on the leases. So that's a new GASP government accounting standard board statement, number 87 on the leases, which the city implement during the fiscal year and bring those lease transaction to the financial statement. And couple other significant estimate that's used by the management, including the investment fair value, depreciation on the capital asset, and of course, with the pension and other post-employment benefit liability, it also involve a lot of estimate used by the actuary to estimate those liabilities for the city. Next slide. Couple sensitive disclosure for the city in the financial statement, including note one, the summary of significant accounting policy, note nine related to the city's claim and judgment, note 10 related to the defined benefit pension plan, and note 11 on other post-employment benefit plan. And we are happy to announce that there are no uncorrected misstatement reported to the city's financial statement. Next slide. We also have not aware of any consultation that the management had with the other accountant related to audit or other accounting related matters, and we encounter no significant difficulty in dealing with the management or any disagreement with management, whether related to the accounting treatment or related to the audit procedures performed. So the next slide will be audit result. So with the assistance, with the, the support of the city's management and the staff, we're happy to conclude the audit and issue unmodified opinions. So with unmodified opinion, that means the financial statements are fairly presented in all material respect. So the accounting policy and estimate, accounting policy has been consistently applied, and the estimate that I mentioned earlier, those major estimates are reasonable. And not only just the financial statement, there are a lot of notes disclosure to accompany the financial statement. Those disclosure are properly reflected in the financial statement. And there are also several compliance audit that we issue opinions on, and we also issue unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion you can get on those statements. And we do have a, a compliance finding that's noted for the single audit, that's noted in, as finding 2022 dash 001 on reporting for the airport program. But other than that, we did not know any other required internal control matter to be reported to those charge of governance. So would that conclude my presentation, and I'm more than happy to answer any question you may have.
Thank you, Frances.
Councilmember Middleton?
Okay, thank you. Frances, just a couple of questions for you, and I'll, I'll presage those questions with saying, not everyone is familiar with the audit processes and how these are conducted, so I just want to get a couple of things on the record for those in the public that are not familiar. The Poon Group, you have a major specialty, as I understand it, in performing audits of public agencies, including many municipalities. Could you talk about the nature of your organization?
So the Poon Group. So, the PUN Group has been in business since 2012. So, our focus has always been focusing in governmental agency, and many other clients we service in, also in the Coachella Valley, are governmental agency. So, we are full-service accounting firm, not only servicing auditing and auditing service, providing auditing service, but also provide tax services. But still, our main focus is on the audit side, especially on the governmental sector. So, we are very familiar with the accounting pronouncement issued by Government Accounting Standard Board, which what we refer to as GASP, that issue pronouncement that dictate how the financial statement should be prepared for governmental agency. But we also follow American Institute of Certified Public Accountant, their professional standard on how to conduct the audit, which is what we call the generally accepted accounting auditing standard. And also because this is a governmental agency audit, we also follow government auditing standard in conducting the audit. So, there are multiple sets of professional standard we follow in conducting these audits. And in addition to that, we also perform the single audit, which is another set of standard and requirement. That's what we call the uniform guidance that we have to follow when we are conducting the compliance audit. So, our firm is specialized in conducting these type of audits. So, that's why we're a professional service firm, and I will say probably 80% of our clients are governmental agency. So, that's what we do, you know, on the day-to-day basis.
All right. Thank you. It's a great answer. Next, in the course of conducting the audit here in Palm Springs, were there any records that you requested that were not made available to you?
There's no such availability. So, the city has worked very diligently, working with us, providing supporting documentation. So, the audit process is actually a very lengthy process. At the end of the day, we issued those two-page report accompanying the financial statement, and two-page report, two-three-page report accompanying those compliance report. But the audit process started way back when in May, April, May timeframe, and it lasts a couple weeks, and then we come back, and then we do our planning, continue to evaluate, and then we'll come back to do year-end field work, we continue to testing. So, there are a lot of sampling that's required. So, there has not been any instance that the documentation will not be provided to us.
Right. And lastly, were there any individuals that you asked to be in contact with, and they were not made available to you?
No, that has not happened in the past.
So, again, thank you, and it's always nice to get an unmodified audit letter. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments or questions from council? All right, seeing none. Thank you very much. And I believe we don't have any action to take on that.
Think it's just a receiving file.
Right. Thank you. So, the next item is Item Agenda, next item on the agenda is 3B, to approve the recommended logo for the Palm Springs International Airport. May we have a staff report, please? Thank you very much. It's our airport director.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Proton and council. In your agenda packet, we have a logo that the airport is recommending for approval, and I wanted to provide a little bit of context for it. We are in the process of thinking more innovatively at the airport and figuring out ways to not only deliver more air service for the City of Palm Springs, but also to focus on organizational innovation, such as how to recruit better, how to bring people into the workforce better, how to market our airport and services industry-wide. So, that's the context for the recommendation to approve this logo. With me, I have the Deputy Director of Marketing for the Airport, Mr. Daniel Meyer, and he can dive in a little bit into the process and how we got here. Also on the line, we have Katie Franco with Aviatric, who's a consultant to the airport. So, I'll turn it over to Daniel and Katie, and then we'll take any questions from there.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for having us. So, yes, I said, I'm Daniel Meyer, Deputy Director of Marketing and Air Service for the airport. I'm excited to be here and to present the logo to you guys tonight. As you know, it's been a process. And so, I want to talk about a little bit how we got here and why we decided to move in this path. And then Katie has a presentation with a lot more detail that she'll provide to you via Zoom, and then we'll have to take a Q&amp;A session at the end. But started in 2021, when we developed a marketing communications plan for the airport, and coming out of that plan, the primary recommendation called for the development of an airport-specific logo, brand, and website to meet the unique marketing and communications needs of the airport. It's part of, as Harry mentioned, and part of our efforts to improve the airport and air service and market the airport, to help set us apart from other airports within Southern California, really make the Palm Springs brand stand out, at least for the Palm Springs Airport, and make it a way that people will consider us flying instead of them be driving into Ontario or LAX or some of the other regional airports. The current logo that we have now on our website was actually not developed from the airport. From my understanding, it was originally, I believe, for the Palm Springs Convention Center, and they swapped out the words Convention Center for International Airport and let us use it. That's what I was told. That was done before my time here. So, is that true? Okay. Oh, okay, okay. It was not researched with the airport in mind, and it was not a mid-century theme designed logo like we have, we are presenting here tonight to you all. I've walked around the airport and found on different areas of the airport are uniforms. There's actually four various logos that are currently in use in various ways. Having this one logo bringing us one nice unified look and feel that everybody can recognize with, and a brand that can start to, when they see it out and about, resonate with the airport itself. And just some other, more simpler things with the current logo is that we don't have the various file types or sizes needed for the applications from advertising or even just embroidering it on a uniform. And so, that's kind of why we embarked on this. And so, I'm going to turn it over now to Katie Franco with Aviatric Communications, and she's going to talk in detail on how we did the research and how we worked with the community on this and how we got to where we are tonight.
Thank you, Daniel. I'm hoping you can hear me. I don't yet have the option to share my screen, but perhaps Todd or someone else can share the presentation on the ground there, or give me access.
Oh, there we go. Is that Katie, or is that Todd?
Thank you. I have been promoted as a panelist, so thank you. Hopefully, you can all see and hear me now. I am going to share my screen, and...
Hey, Katie, just a second. I've got the control, so let me know when you want me to change the slide, okay, please?
Oh, okay.
Great, thank you.
Are you seeing my screen, or?
We are on the very first slide, which is talking about the design process.
Okay. So, first, thank you, everyone. My name is Katie Franco. As Daniel mentioned, I am the owner and principal of Aviatric Communications, and we have been working with the airport, the Palm Springs Airport, since 2021 to help improve communications within the community and the aviation industry. As Daniel mentioned, the logo that exists now, it's been around for five or six years, but isn't as versatile as the airport would like. You can't stack it vertically. You can't turn it into a social media icon. There is no accepted color palette for it. So, the airport was looking for a way to create a logo that would work across a variety of mediums. And with that design process, the airport was very certain to gather different voices throughout this process. So, airport staff, the general public, had close work with several regional stakeholders, have helped ensure that this logo is going to be reflective of a variety of audiences and opinions. In fact, it was so important that we went back to each of these groups again throughout the process. So, there has been ample opportunity for participation in this logo development process. The airport staff is one of the most important stakeholders in logo development for the airport. So, they are the first ones we worked with, and we wanted to learn who they were and how they wanted to be represented. So, we started by helping develop mission, vision, and values for the airport. These are foundational guidelines for how the airport operates, but also how it wants to be perceived. So, they describe the company's goals, the way employees want to work together, and how they want to be perceived by their customers and the community. So, the airport in this discussion used a cross-section of frontline employees, including administration, security, maintenance, operations, marketing, finance, and leadership, to really be sure they were encompassing the group, meaning a communal discussion on their vision and values for the future. This is the airport's mission statement, and for the visual representation, the key words they were looking for were cheerful, welcoming, diverse, and bold. Next slide. So, with the process, the airport used surveys to be able to gather and synthesize feedback, and then meetings to discuss directly with their stakeholders and audiences. So, starting in March 2022, we had a third-party conduct a community-wide survey via telephone to understand how the entire Coachella Valley felt about air travel and multiple airports. We also deployed a public survey in the fall of 2022, more directly related to the draft airport logos, and more than 500 people submitted a response. We conducted a stakeholder survey as well in the fall of 2022 that more directly aligned with the logo and design opportunities. In the first focus groups and public meetings, they were held in 2021 to help us understand what the community was currently feeling about their airport. And so, these regional partners included the City of Palm Springs, business and tourism partners, local businesses, and the Palm Springs Airport Marketing Committee as well. In the fall, the airport held two public meetings, more directly related to the logo development process, and to give some clarity to the public, as well as to solicit public feedback. Nearly 70 people participated in those two meetings. We also held a larger stakeholder meeting in the fall, taking a deep dive into those draft logos. In addition to hearing directly from stakeholders and community members, we conducted research into the architecture and design that makes the region so unique, and that's specifically, of course, mid-century modernism. So, a look at a combination of indoor/outdoor, bold colors, clean lines, use of negative space, really exactly what you guys are known for, and making sure that we're creating now a logo more emblematic of that region. We did look at several of the identities that currently exist in your community, also building off those strong fonts, bold colors, and geometric shapes. Some of these examples are very classic mid-century modern, like the Palm Springs welcome signs, and some take a more modern approach to the colors and font palettes, like "Visit Greater Palm Springs." Looking at the airport itself, we want Palm Springs Airport to be like no place else, and really embody the region's vitality and unique characteristics, but also positioning it as a player in the region's aviation network. So, we looked at what the other airports in the region were doing. You can see here, Ontario, Long Beach, Los Angeles, San Diego, John Wayne, and San Bernardino. There are some common themes throughout these. The use of blue, common here, and as well across the country. Some of these use airplanes in the logos. Some of them, half of them, use the airport code, and then the use of negative or white space. In terms of tone, LAX is very bold. San Bernardino has a more abstract feel, and Long Beach has a SoCal vibe with the color gradients, the lowercase lettering, and the palm tree. So, there is a breadth of ways to describe your airport or its personality. It's important to note that none of these are the local city seal or Convention and Visitors Bureau brands. These are all independent standalone brands that represent the airport specifically. Going back to the input process, in multiple stakeholder feedback, excuse me, multiple stakeholder focus groups, we heard directly from regional design leaders like Lisa Vosper Smith, Colleen Hayes, JR Roberts, Gary Wetzler, and we received specific feedback on the draft logos, and they had important feedback for the new direction and with design revisions. We gathered a tremendous amount of feedback during these initial logo development, and it was clear that while the airport was interested in a departure from the traditional airport logo designs, the community really wanted something that was mid-century modern, and we took this to heart. We developed new options. We shifted color palettes, font styles. We toned down the vibrancy of some of the color palettes, and we utilized more white space. We also heard from the stakeholders that we should be encouraged to explore the use of the airport's code PSP. So, with this important feedback, we refined existing drafts and created new drafts. Each of those drafts had different variations, but in January, we presented nine final draft logos to the airport and stakeholders. And then the marketing committee selected the top, from the top four, its preferred choice, and moved forward into the airport commission last month, passed unanimously. And so, I'm honored to show you the next hopeful iteration of the airport's logo. And the airport staff, the marketing committee, the commission, the overwhelming favorite for this group was geometric plain. Geometric plain, as you can see here, is contemporary, clean, and sophisticated, with strong roots in mid-century modernism. So, looking at the logo mark, these are four unique abstract geometric shapes that come together to form a plane, a negative-space plane taking off into the right. Personally, I love that these are four different shapes. None of them are the same, but they manage to create the same plane. One of the commissioners in our marketing committee also recognized that the negative-space plane looked like the wind turbines outside the city, which I thought was a great touch. The font is Gotham, which is, and is treated with a lowercase treatment for the airport. And so, these round balls, those circles of the P, the A, and the G, really serve as a counterbalance to that strong angular geometric logo mark. And the color palette is a traditional mid-century modern color palette here, telling a story, and that's that red brick desert, the green grass, the blue sky, and a cheerful sun, all coming together to support the mid-century modern feel of the new Palm Springs International Airport logo. The next slide shows one of the team's most important characteristics, and that is the versatility of this logo. So, it can be stacked vertically, horizontally, it can be used as a one color, and it can utilize the airport code PSP. So, this new option gives Daniel and his team the chance to put it on logos, on lanyards, on social media icons, on the website, a variety of ways that this logo will help him tell the airport's story across a variety of channels. The last slide I have here is just a look at what the future of this logo launch would be, depending on approval today. We would begin our work with parallel tracks. We want the opportunity to both help create a logo, but also use that logo identity into a new website for the airport. So, we will be moving into two tracks of website development and getting that built and launched in support of a July 1 public launch of the logo identity. And so, we will be working internally, behind the scenes, with Daniel's team to help prepare the staff and get their uniforms ready, to prepare stakeholders, and make sure that they have the latest version of the logo and the brand guidelines to update their websites, on-staff tenants as well. And then, the public launch July 1 will, many of those elements will be digital, so the website, social media icons, but then also in-person, including onsite banners in the parking lot, dusty cows, or wherever we may be able to promote the new logo and identity of the airport by the July 1 launch date. With that, I will open it to questions, or get it back to Daniel to conclude. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Do we have any questions or comments from council? A councilmember Middleton?
Just a quick comment and thanks. The outreach that was done to all of the various stakeholders was extremely good, and I think this final product that we are looking at is a reflection that we, in fact, engaged with the very broad section... the very broad section of Palm Springs that cares passionately about these kinds of issues. And I thank staff and everyone who was involved in making sure that every voice was heard.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions from council? Mayor Protem.
First of all, I just want to clarify two things. I was part of the larger stakeholder group, but not as mayor Protem. This was before I was elected.
Yes, that's correct. Sorry, I was on the staff report incorrect. I apologize.
That's okay, but I was part of it. And also, the research, the identities researched included my company, but that was, did not involve me in any way.
Correct.
Okay, so I just want to clarify these things. They just researched it on their own. So first of all, I want to, I appreciate you doing this. I know when it came last time, there was a, quite a lot of public comment. We have an involved community, and it is never easy to have designed by committee. But I do think this is proof that it actually came out better, as difficult as I'm sure it was for Aviatrics and the airport staff, as I know it was, because it sort of went a little nuts. But, but in a good way, we came out with something great. So my question is, I know you mentioned the four different logos going through. So we'll have a published style guide for this now. Is that correct?
Yes, part of the scope of work will come with a full brand guidebook. They'll be able to have guidelines for how to use it, how they can place it, how they can, what you can and cannot do with it.
All the colors, exact colors.
All the colors, exact colors, everything, yes.
The city, it tends to get used a lot. I do want to ask, given this is historic building, is there plans to put the logo on the building itself?
No, no, there are not, because, well, of course, with the historic status and the regulations with that, we're not going to be putting anything on the front of the building with that.
Okay, so, and not that we'll, and it would be helpful. I know you mentioned a number of different, you know, uniforms, badges, websites, things like that. But I think, I know banners obviously are great. As it's, anything that's sort of on the building, or the monuments or things, I think that, not to say come before council, but sort of just be cognizant that you'll, it'll, people are very aware of what's going on.
Absolutely, yes. Like, as you, as you mentioned with this whole process, definitely a very involved community. And in the end, I learned a lot about Palm Springs, met some great people, met a lot about preservation, really got to know Gary Wexler and Stephen Kilon, where actually they made a proposal to us to do some restorations to the front of the terminal, so like some of the original typefaces and stuff. So it's actually, as you said, I think it was a difficult process, but in the end, came out very well. And I love the logo, and it feels very Palm Springs to me, at least.
Yeah, it feels, it feels, it feels very modern. I really like that, you know, this is Palm Springs Airport, and although it serves the whole valley, it is the Palm, it is part of our brand. And I think that's probably one of the reasons you got so much input. But it's also the octopus that feeds the whole valley. And, and so we're very lucky to have this, and that's why I think it's important. I do think that as we go forward and we have a, I know there's a master airport plan, but we should really be cognizant of the master design plan for the, for the air, for the terminals and the concourse. We have a logo. It's not necessarily a full branding campaign. But as we look at wayfinding, as we look at seating, as we look at everything, to sort of think about a design plan to create a consistent look so that we don't end up with four different logos or four different, you know, competing styles going on, because we've now defined a style. So I wanted to mention that. And I think, I think the airport should reflect, you know, our city, our values. I think the historic nature of the building, it's, it's, it's a very special building. It's obviously, it's convenient, it's, it's, it's an indoor/outdoor. But the, the architecture itself was very important, sort of involving our landscape into the airport. And I want to make sure that we work on, we've done a great job in sort of growing our airport and managing how to do it and keep the design as much as possible. But as we go forward, we should try and do that anymore. And so I, I also wanted to, so, so when we look at other uses for it, that we can consider how this is done. And I also, first of all, Aviatrics, I have great respect for them. They're wonderful. I want to mention this just to the city in terms of our procurement process. I think a lot of the reason that some of the community, up, community concern was that we have design professionals in town who didn't know this was happening. And that's sort of a reason why we, as a city, should think about procurement, ways to reach out to locals so they could be involved from the beginning. And certainly, you know, Gary Wexler, his father designed the airport, so, so he's an important person to have involved. But, you know, I like this. I want to congratulate Aviatrics on sort of managing all the community input on this, and, and you, Daniel, and Harry as well. It's, I know it wasn't easy, but I do like this. I think we came out with something much better than was there last time. And I think, I think this will serve us well, so thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or questions from council? Seeing none, do we, oh, council member DeHart.
Move to approve the item.
Great, thank you. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember DeHart?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Bernstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Hostage?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Guerner?
Yes.
Motion passes 5-0.
Thank you all for your work. The next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the City Council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, we generally cannot take action on any items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be given to each speaker. We have one public speaker at this time, Michael Joseph Pitkin.
Michael Joseph Pitkin, all allocations. I ask that every Palm Springs City Council meeting, every public testimony, public hearing, and public comment, that everyone who speaks use their full name. I have noticed in several meetings, first names are only used. First names only, to me, are confusing, as I am not sure who is who. It comes off as a good old boys' club. As a Palm Springs citizen who is interested in addressing many public Palm Springs City Council agenda matters, as an example homelessness and the Navigation Center, I have had to follow up on everything on my own without understanding full names and positions. It is impossible. As I am the 16% failure rate of Martha's Village and Kitchen, Inc., it is important I have the correct name of who to address. Martha's Village and Kitchen has had the following list of contacts. Martha's Oasis, Inc., Articles of Incorporation, July 30, 1997, Alfred W. Mayor, Tom Quinn, Reverend Joseph A. Carroll, Harvey Mandale, James John Holmberg III, May 9, 2008, Linda Barack, CEO, Casey Boswell, CFO, September 10, 2021, Sam Hollenbeck, Chief Executive Officer, Howard Lincoln, Michael Lionheart, October 14, 2022. I've been down to Martha's Village and Kitchen in Indio. The bus number one doesn't even stop coming back west. I asked this body to look at the lack of sunlight bus passes in Palm Springs for the poor. Martha's Village and Kitchen, Inc. has violated my civil rights, even without knowing me as a client. So now I advocate for sex workers' rights and SAMSA HERSA's harm reduction programs. So if any of you need a bubble pipe, or needles, or sharp containers, please let me know. My name is Michael Joseph Pitkin at PalmSprings@gmail.com. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next item is City Council and City Manager requests for upcoming agenda development. City Manager Stiles, do you have some items to discuss?
As mayor, council members, I think we have up on the screen some of the upcoming items that are coming up on, on April 27. I do want to mention, you'll notice, you know, we have questions from time to time on traffic signal synchronization. So we've asked our city engineer and representative, I think from SEVAG, will be here to give us an update on the synchronization projects. Of course, our CDBG Annual Action Plan. We are expecting to have a, as you'll note, a public hearing on the tentative Dream Hotel Amendment. And then most likely a TOT Vacation Rental Revenue Sharing Program for Affordable Housing that's been discussed by the council members. I do want to mention some other items that are kind of developing and may very well be on the April 27 agenda, which includes some of the airport lease work that our airport manager is doing. The city attorney advises me that we may very well have our reparations contract on the agenda for the next council meeting for consideration by the council. We may have some homelessness, hopefully some homelessness update stuff to follow up on that we talked about earlier today. Third-party delivery fees that I believe, and I understand, came out of the pandemic, and council asked us to bring back an ordinance on that as well. Looking a little farther into May, and in May 25, I do want to mention somewhere during the month of May, we expect to have a, we'll expect to have a budget study session, as we've talked about, as we're preparing the budget. So that will be somewhere in the month of May, and we'll be working to get that scheduled for you. That's all I have.
Can I just clarify that it's the reparations consultant contract, not the reparations contract?
Correct. This is just to bring on a consultant to start the process.
Yeah.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments or items from council? No? Okay, Mayor Protem?
Yeah, okay. So first of all, I just wanted to say to the public, the applications for the affordable housing monarch, monarch apartments are now open. The waitlist is actually open, and that is on the city's website. And hopefully, we'll be getting it out more to the public. But there are 60 affordable housing units at Indian and San Rafael. I also wanted to congratulate Jeff Kelshimer for Firefighter of the Year. I wanted to mention that Ann Sheffer will be getting her star on the Walk of Stars on Thursday at 11:00 a.m., and who was instrumental in a lot of the public art in the city. And lastly, I just wanted to acknowledge Harold Matzner, who is, who has left or is moving on from his position as Chair of the Film, Palm Springs International Film Festival, although he'll still be involved. Thank him for what, everything he did for our city, for our brand, and for the film festival, among many other things. And his mark will be indelible with the film festival in our city. And also just to welcome Nishat Chandra as the new Chair of the Board, and, and hope that we will continue Harold's incredible devotion to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember DeHart.
I, I think it's Wednesday, the star.
I'm sorry, Wednesday, the 12, Wednesday, yes, the 12.
Yeah, yeah.
11:00 a.m.
And I'll echo the comments and appreciation, and kudos and hats off to Harold's, Harold Matzner for 23 years of service with the Film International Film Festival, and wish him the best in his retirement. And we know he's not going to go far and continue his work in the community. So thank you for two decades of great work in the community so far.
Middleton?
Thank you. I second and third the comments of my colleagues and want to once again thank everyone who was involved in the 85th Birthday Celebration. That was an incredibly memorable day for all of us. And the crowds were just absolutely fabulous. It was a perfect day in Palm Springs. And it was such a team effort of city officials, the mayor and her leadership, and our business community, and Mr. McCormick for that incredible idea of bringing 85 vintage cars together. And my brother-in-law is as jealous as he can possibly be that I got to ride in a '41 Chevy. So thank you for that. Lastly, we are continuing to work with SEVAG and other cities on getting the funding that is needed for the bridges at, specifically on Indian Canyon, although I've personally given up on getting Ginatri included in that. At this point, I don't have an ask of council or of staff in terms of additional actions that are needed. But we are in, very much in the budgetary process. The federal government is, is going to be acting, and we may need additional resources at a very, on very short notice in order to make our presentations to, to Washington as needed. I did have an opportunity a couple of weeks ago as a part of a League of California Cities delegation to have a few minutes to talk with our current congressman, Calvert, regarding the importance of that project, and was very pleased with his receptivity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say that I have a Mayor's Book Club this Thursday, April 13, at the Mizell Center at 6:00 p.m. The book is, is a series of essays in a book titled Disability Visibility, and there will be an ASL interpreter at that event. And again, thank you all for, for Saturday. By the end of it, I was just overcome and just tearing, watching everybody have so much fun in, in this city that I love so much. And with that, unless we have any other comments, seeing none, all right. So the next regular City Council meeting will be on Thursday, April 27, 2023, at 5:30 p.m. This meeting is adjourned.